And for our regular meeting, and in lieu of the pledge of allegiance, I'm gonna ask everybody to just take a minute of silence for Bill Scott, President of STA, which I'm sure we all know, and passed over this weekend, so, brief moment of silence. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay. Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Peniagua.
Here.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Here.
Counselor Majoke.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor Driscoll.
Here.
All present, Madam President.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April the 12th meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Madam President, Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yeah.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yeah.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Minutes are approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Are there any petitions?
No, Madam President.
Are there any committee reports? Are there any communications?
Yes, I have two communications. I have one from the Honorable Nader Maroon, City Auditor, a report of the Syracuse Police COVID-19 procedures as requested by the Common Council Finance Committee, with management response from the administration, from Costello, Cooney, and Ferron, on behalf of JMA Tech Properties LLC, and Manali Taylor Street LLC, accepting terms and conditions of ordinance 451 of 2020 and ordinance 83 of 2021.
Thank you. I have item number eight. I would like to introduce it and urge its adoption. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, now, Counselor Bay. Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. Is that Counselor Allen? Jim, is Counselor Allen on the call?
Yes, she just texted and says she has a bad signal.
Okay. Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
So, Madam President, do you want me to go with eight votes and wait for Counselor Allen to get back on?
Or Counselor Bay? Okay, she's back.
Okay, great. So Counselor Allen, we're voting for the rest, rest of the commission of these, you're voting yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
I'll set with that one.
Yeah, excuse me, unanimous vote. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bay.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items number nine through thirteen. I'd like to introduce them all and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item number nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
It's adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item number ten. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
And the ten is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item eleven. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Is that a yes, Counsel Carney? Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, eleven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twelve. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twelve is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Carney, can you unmute before you will?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
That's.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Okay, item thirteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items fourteen through twenty. Item fifteen will be held. All the other items, I'd like to introduce them.
Thank you. Item fourteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yeah.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fourteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item fifteen is being held. Item sixteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yeah.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item sixteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item seventeen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item seventeen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item eighteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Allen.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item eighteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item nineteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yeah.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item nineteen is approved by unanimous vote.
Item twenty. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Carney.
You, Madam President, I have items twenty-one through twenty-eight. Those items are ready. I'd like to introduce them and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item twenty-one. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item twenty-two. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item twenty-three. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. I can't hear you, Counsel Carney.
Hear me now? Yes.
That's a yes? Okay, thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item twenty-four. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item twenty-five. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item twenty-six. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Twenty-six is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item twenty-seven. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item twenty-eight. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is adopted by unanimous vote.
Counselor Hogan.
Thank you, President Hudson. I have items twenty-nine through thirty-six. I'd like to introduce and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item twenty-nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-nine is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-one. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-two. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-three. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-three is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-four. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yeah.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Okay, item thirty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-five. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Excuse me, I skipped over Counsel Carney. Counsel Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-six. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-six is adopted by unanimous vote.
Counselor Majoke. I hear somebody whispering. Put yourself on mute, please. Counselor Majoke.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. They are already, I'm introducing them, I'm urging for their adoption.
Thank you. Item thirty-seven. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Can't hear your Counselor Carney.
Can you hear it? Yes.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-seven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-eight, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Green. Excuse me, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-eight is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-nine, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-nine is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items forty through fifty-eight. We'll hold item forty-one, and the rest of the items, I would like to introduce and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item forty, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes, yes.
Item forty, item forty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item forty-one is being held. Item forty-two, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-three, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-three is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-four, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-five, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-six, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-six is adopted by unanimous vote.
I'm just talking to myself. Okay, item forty-seven, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-seven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-eight, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. I couldn't hear your Counselor Carney.
Yes. Near.
Yeah, now I can.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-eight is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-nine, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-nine is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item fifty, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. Sorry, I couldn't hear Counselor Allen. I can't hear Ms. Counselor Allen on the call.
I still lost signal again.
I think she, yeah, I think she's off.
Counselor number fifty, is that a yes or a no? Thank you, Counselor. Counselor just called.
Yes.
Okay, item fifty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item fifty-one, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fifty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item fifty-two, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fifty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item fifty-three, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fifty-three is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item fifty-four, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fifty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item fifty-five, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan. Sorry, I couldn't hear Counselor.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fifty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item fifty-six, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Pennyagwa.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.